This this meeting is held remotely pursuant to the provisions of an action taken on March twenty ninth. Twenty twenty-three, when Governor Healy signed into law supplemental budget bill, which, among other things, further extends temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law. Temporary provisions were first amended, da-da-da-da-da. This meeting is being recorded. We're using a Zoom platform. Anything you do and say will be recorded. Please be advised. We'll we'll call a roll to make sure we have a quorum. Carolyn?
Here.
Jay?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Tim, we have a quorum. We'll call the meeting to order at seven thirty-two.
I don't have to change it. That's the same as last week.
It's great. We do everything we can to accommodate. We've got a A and R at seven forty-five, the hearing at eight. Executive, I mean, the Economic Development Committee at eight thirty. Regarding electric vehicle charging, is that what that is?
Yes.
And then some discussion about the mall at eight forty-five. Um, we don't have any minutes, minutes of two weeks ago. Twenty-sixth of March. Do we have a motion?
We have a motion and a comment. I I make a motion that we.
I want a second. I want a second before I want to comment.
Second right here.
All right, now we'll have a comment.
Comment.
Um, Jay?
Yeah.
Are you paying for all the words? There's like less and less connector words in in the sentences.
Well, when the when there's a lively discussion, I have to try to keep up. And then when I'm doing a hundred things at once, sometimes I don't carefully. You can use Chat G P T to fix stuff like that, of course.
You could also use your brain and your fingers.
Yeah, it'll be double or triple the workout.
Guess who's gonna be clerk next time?
Oh, no, I'm just, he just keeps trying to, he just keeps trying to automate the town.
All right, we have any other comments, additions or corrections? Okay, roll call. Carolyn?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Tim is aye, so we'll accept the minutes of the twenty-sixth. Any bills? No, we paid the bill for the item. That's all set.
If we have time, there's another, there's another A and R, but I'm not sure if we got time.
There's another A and R for Randall Road?
Yes. Other side of the road, though, from Marx, next to Peter.
Well, we'll see what happens. Any other news?
Um, there was an email that went to um, the planning board email, and I got, I also got it at Conservation um, about water use of the wells over at um over what Six B, is that what that's called? Boundless Adventures, um, blah, 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 blah. Just wondering if there was any need for the town to withhold water use for town purposes over there.
Do those wells feed the Rockwell, or is they run out some wells from someplace else?
The Rockwell runs.
Those those wells, because they were commissioned when River Run was gonna be a subdivision. And Sennys ended up buying those after they bought their original property from Reese. But when they attempted to buy the field across the street from Spooky World from Reese, which was in the first deal, that wasn't available. It was gonna be a separate parcel, and they had anticipated putting wells over there. But when they looked at the opportunity to pick up River Run for less money than Reese's wanted for the twelve acres across the street. And it had already on it two wells that were certified. They decided to buy that. And then they ran a water line along River Road to the daycare, the gas station, and got them up and running temporarily while they got their big well fields built on land beyond the hotel.
Okay, so nobody's using the water now, right?
So now it's out of out of commission. It's it's been segregated. So there's little less than ten thousand gallons a day that you can legally draw based, I mean, if it's recertified, which wouldn't take much evidently. It. So Kristin's asked whether or not we foresee any use on the River Run property that the town would acquire as part of this deal with River Bridge. If we see foresee any water usage on that site. And we have talked about the possibility of a cottage housing project going there on that site. And we we also talked about those wells supplying water to the, was the sand site. I mean, we've, we've talked about those wells serving a municipal function potentially, anyway. I don't, what does River Run, I mean, what does Boundless do for water? Do they have? They don't have running water now.
I don't think they have running water at all, no.
But, I mean, if if at some point they were to put in restrooms and some other services, the potential's there for them to want water as a tenant of the town. So I don't. I don't know. What do people think? What should we tell Kristen?
I think certainly, um, pointing out that at some point, depending on what does happen there and potentially Boundless Adventures, you know, not selling all of the water, certainly right away. Um, from a conservation perspective, there really isn't anything. Um, the field across the street from Spooky World in the C R does allow farming. But I'm pretty sure we also allowed a well because the wells that we're now talking about weren't municipally owned, so.
Right.
Should anybody actually ever farm it again? I don't think irrigation would be an issue.
No, I mean, they could use the 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 river, but more and more farmers are trying to use wells because of the opportunity to run drip irrigation systems that are far more efficient and surface water is difficult to use for drip. Just takes more, you know, effort, so. But you're right. I mean, there was the stipulation that a well could be put on that twelve acres.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts? That's it? That was simple.
Right?
If it were to become, if we put some kind of residential, single families, you'd want individual wells anyways, right?
Well, I thought that when we talked about cottage housing, we were trying to find a way to lower the initial costs for infrastructure. So if if you were to tie, type, you know, tie into municipal water that, well, a public water supply that was already there. I think we assumed that if the land was inexpensive, the water was available, um, then you'd just be dealing with this, with a a septic issue for infrastructure costs, those big infrastructure costs that hopefully would lower the cost of the project to the point where you could begin to sell houses for less than six hundred thousand dollars. At least that's what I thought we had been talking about.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, we can relay that to Kristen, I suppose. It it probably warrants a a general discussion from multiple town boards at some point, just to discuss if we're gonna buy the property, what do we foresee? You know, what are we planning on doing?
Right.
Because there's a lot of opportunity there.
Right, and because the purchases on the warrant.
Yeah.
Um, I think they're just trying to kind of answer some of those questions ahead of time.
What do we got? Two minutes? I will say that I missed the meeting last time I was at the Regional Planning Commission. We approved um, another hundred thousand dollars for district local technical assistance. Berlin will participate now in a accessory dwelling unit project, a continuation of the cottage housing project, um, the zoning diagnostic for ourselves. What was the other one? There's some other piece. Anyway, there's four different D L T A projects that were part of. I think it's somewhere around forty thousand dollars worth of value out of the, I mean, that's going into those different projects, so. In some, like the zoning diagnostic, we're the only one, but in the others, it's, you know, multiple towns, but they're, they are planning on coming back to visit, revisit the cottage housing issue, and they wanna bring in the possibility of having some developers come to a forum and have some more discussion about the intricacies of trying to get infrastructure at a reasonable cost, so you can get these houses in there at a small, affordable range, so.
What's the timing, Tim?
Coming up. Pardon?
What's the timing? Is there an endpoint to that at some point in time?
To that study?
Yeah.
Um, I I would think that it'll happen over the course of the summer. My hope is that the A D U, the accessory dwelling units, the cottage housing, and the zoning diagnostic can all take place. And then they'd help us apply for money to do the rewrite of the zoning bylaw based on the problems they pick up on when they do the diagnostics, so. Some of those issues probably could present possible warrant articles for the end, for the fall town meeting. Um, so that would be kind of fun. Give us some good possibility. Anyway, seven forty-five. We've got the two ninety-nine Pleasant Street subdivision. Annie's in the audience, right?
She is.
And maybe she has someone with her. I don't know. Hi there.
Hi, yes, I am here, and I do have a couple other, you know, interested parties with me.
Anybody, anybody you'd like me to promote?
Promote to what?
So that they can talk.
Oh, oh, yes, um, I guess my brother Bob, um, I just wanted to say that Connor Stone was not able to, it was too late notice for them to um, have a representative here. So if you have any questions, um, that you you need to have answered, um, I can take them down and relay those to Connor Stone and get back to you. I I'm not sure if this was, this meeting was just sort of a formality, or if you have any specific questions that need to be answered before signing off on it.
So we got an A and R for this parcel?
Yes.
Do you?
Jay, do you have the plan? Digitally?
Yeah, and we've met with the um, Conservation Commission and the and the um, Board of Health.
Do you got something, Jay?
Um, yeah, I'm just finding it. Let's see.
Okay. We're gonna pull it up on the screen so we can all look at it.
My sense of you guys, right, so it must be in my.
Oh, and there's our.
Hey, all right. Promote that man.
Done.
Hi, Tom.
Hello.
Hi.
We we haven't screwed things up too much, and we're just starting the conversation about this, the uh A and R for two ninety-nine.
Annie, do you remember when you sent it to me? I can't quite get. I thought I sent it around to everyone.
I did get a copy of it, so you did send it around. While Jay's looking, can I ask a question? Did anybody seen it?
I got it, yep. Okay, show my screen. There. It's gotta rotate it, huh?
That's not the one.
That's the wrong one.
Yeah, no, that's the right one. It's two pages.
Yeah, there's two pages.
Good.
Yeah. Good readable.
You could blow it up a little bit.
What part would you like? There's the road. We have reviewed this before. What were we wait, what changes were we waiting for? What were we looking at, looking for?
So the the, this is a, we've signed this plan already, or we didn't? I can't remember.
We didn't. We asked for um, some changes.
Okay.
Right, recall what we asked for for the change.
Um.
Go ahead, Ann. I'm not sure there were any changes, um.
We just needed more information on something, I thought.
Okay.
So Lot One is got plenty of acreage, I mean, plenty of frontage, and it's got the appropriate acreage. Lot Two is a reduced frontage lot. And that's got plenty of acreage. Lot Three has got plenty of frontage and plenty of acreage. Lot Four. What happened? Lot Four. So Lot, so does this mean Lot Four isn't a buildable lot?
Lot Four's got an existing house on it, right?
Can you?
No, Lot Lot Four was, is basically where the drive, driving range is or or was. I mean, it's still there, but not active.
So Lot Four is ten acres, but it's got the New England Power Company easement through the majority of it. So huh. Plenty of frontage, plenty of acreage, it's a but is it a buildable lot?
Buildable in what sense? Isn't that zone for residential? I, no, nobody's expecting to, um, you know, put a house on Lot Four. It has some commercial zoning there, and it would either continue as a or come back to life as a driving range or some other commercial something.
But it does seem to meet the the area and dimensional requirements for a buildable lot.
Yeah, it's just that if the if the New England Power easement wouldn't allow for construction on that piece, I suppose you could build a house with a driving range trailer was, huh?
Yeah, I guess. I don't see that the easement I, there's no requirement that we like subtract the surface area of the easement from the surface area in applying the A and R. So I mean, to me, it meets the dimensional requirements. It's not labeled, it's not a buildable lot. If we approve this, I think we're approving a buildable lot from, you know, from a subdivision point of view.
Yep, I agree.
Well, there's also frontage on Whitney Street that's adequate, right? Or is there a C R in this somewhere here?
So there is, there, I don't know if the C R touches that area, but you can see New England Power Company easement goes from Whitney Street up to that dotted line. And there is the riverfront area over there on the the left-hand side of the property. So.
Anyway, I'll.
It's a challenging site.
It it, uh, but but those lots seem to have all comply.
Uh, can we move the plan down and go back to Lot One, please? Is there a pinch point there?
Well, it it, the house is on the frontage, that then it gets to the point where the C R, um, the land that's at the pinch point has, is under the C R, so it couldn't be developed anyway.
Okay.
So I think we're all set with that. Um, if you find the the block with the information, I'll make a motion based on what's I move that we approve, um, an A and R, well, yes. Somewhere you've got the information I need to be able to make the motion.
Yeah, can you see it? The corner?
Not yet.
Really?
Lower right-hand corner? Two twenty-nine to three seventeen South Street?
He needs the map and page, too. Which is in the upper left-hand corner.
So.
Yeah, map to parcel fifteen?
Yeah, but block and page, um, oh, handbook, six fifty-three, Plan Twenty-four. I suppose that's the one we'll use. Drawn by I need the other corner now.
Cornerstone Engineering.
You got, where are they?
Well, I'm not sure if my whole screen is showing up on yours, so you don't see the, you don't see the title block right now?
No.
You know what I can.
Oh, really? Oh, I do.
Locked by us.
Oh, it's blocked by you guys. You can drag yourselves up to the top.
Oh, there we go. There we go. Good. A plan drawn for Ronald D Wheeler revocable trust by Cornerstone Engineering. December first, twenty twenty-three. Showing four sub, four subdivision lot, four A and R lots. Um, approval under the subdivision control are not required. I think that's everything.
Second.
Looks good. Lot happening on it, that's for sure, but it seems fine.
Tim's to the chairman, or is he handing the baton back to Tom?
No, I handed it back to Tom.
You did?
Yeah.
I didn't hear that. All right, so the, I made the second, so I can't make a second if I'm the chair.
Oh.
I'll second, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to accept the plan written by Cornerstone Engineering. Um, approval not required under the subdivision control law. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, I will ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald?
Aye.
Jay Teach?
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler?
Aye.
Thomas Andrew?
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. So we'll need to get this signed up and circulated around. Who's got the Mylar?
Um. I think Cornerstone would have that.
Yeah.
We'll need that plus two paper copies to get around and sign on all.
And some money.
And a check for
four lots? Hundred and fifty, four hundred, five fifty, right?
That seems too much.
Is it?
We got a new schedule?
I think it's one fifty plus a hundred per.
Oh, good. All right.
Okay, so if I go back to Cornerstone and tell them they, this has been approved, they'll know where to take it from here?
Well, we voted to approve it, and we need to, yeah, we'll need to get the signatures on the on the title block. Or actually on the signing block. So they'll provide us with a Mylar and two paper copies and the Form A and the check.
Okay, um, a Mylar and two what? Copies?
Paper, paper copies. Paper, paper copies.
Paper copies. Two paper copies.
Form A.
Okay, and the check needs to be a hundred fifty times four, or did you?
No, it's it's one fifty plus three times a hundred. Right?
One fifty, so.
So it's four fifty, I said it's it's four fifty.
Okay, four fifty. And should that that should be made out to the town of Berlin?
Yep. We voted on the Tim Wheeler Vacation Trust, but that was voted down.
And the and the thing to do would be to put the drawings. Above on the top of the mailbox and put the Form A and the check in an envelope in the planning board mailbox that's now building. They may already know that.
Okay, I'll I'll bring this information back to them.
Right, now we gotta figure out how we're gonna get the signatures done, because we don't really have a good process for that yet. Took really long time to get marks done last time.
I'll grab it if it's up there and bring it around.
No, thank you. I'm leaving Saturday for a week.
Okay.
Philly, Turkey. Unless you want to come there, I'll sign it there.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Night.
All right, Eloise has her hand up.
Okay. Jay can stop sharing the screen.
Let's see how you do that.
I can do it.
Excellent, thank you.
I just wanted to do a gentle reminder that Tom needs to get his nomination papers then.
Um, Sanford?
I thought it was Tommy Andrew that his turn.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And no, I. I. I thought I just ran last year.
I thought you had filled in a vacancy.
I thought I filled in the vacancy and then ran last year, no?
Okay, let me go back and check.
You need mine, and I've got them. I'm gonna drop them off tomorrow.
Did I send the nomination papers to you?
Yeah.
Since I had COVID, my mind is watery. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
I can drop it off in Thursday if I don't catch.
Um, you could slip it under the door, or there is a mailbox where on the far right.
Okay.
It's accountant, somebody, and then town clerk.
All right.
Thank you.
All set.
Thank you. All right, we're a little bit behind schedule because we have a public hearing that we're supposed to start at eight o'clock.
All right, what do you need?
What do I need? I just need to open the public hearing.
Oh, okay, there's no one to promote.
Nope, there's no one to promote. And we have three. Uh, articles to take up. Correct? So, um.
It's down to two now, right?
Well, we'll have the third one, but we'll talk about that when it gets to it. Do you, Tim, do you remember what order they are in the where they were published in the paper?
The signs first.
Okay.
The the. Over fifty five is second, and the citizen's petition is third.
All right.
Article twenty eight, twenty nine, and thirty.
Let's take them up in that order then, okay?
Yep.
So. Sign. Bylaw. Um, over fifty five. And. Rezone. All right, so the first part of this public hearing. Uh, what are we gonna call it? Me call the public hearing to order at eight oh six P M. Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty four. And it was for the. Sign, updated sign. Bylaw. To to allow move to allow. LED copy, I don't know how it was phrased.
Digital municipal information signs.
Thank you. Do you wanna read any of that? Uh, or do you want to give people an idea of what we're doing? And Jay, can you talk to it? Why not?
Um, yeah, but do you want to? I have to find it to read it. Does anybody else have it?
Oh, sorry.
I don't have it.
I was looking for it. Because apparently there was something in it I didn't realize.
You if you go to town of Berlin and you you scroll on that opening page. The warrant will be posted there, and then you can pull it up.
Uh, okay, so it's not my town government, it's townofberlin.com?
Yeah. It's right in the notices right there on the. First page. Scroll down a little, I think.
There's a box on the right hand side. Usually.
Annual town meeting.
Yeah. Call uptown meeting. And then.
Here to be the warrant, yep.
And then, yeah, there you go.
Where it is there? If there's an index.
It's article twenty eight. So it's toward the end. I mean, the last three articles are ours, so.
It's right after twenty seven.
Ooh.
All right, I got it. Should I put it up on my screen?
Yes, please.
Guys have disappeared. Oh, there we are. Technology manager. There it is.
There we go.
We have it. So the intention here is to edit our existing. Sign section of our zoning bylaw. To allow digital municipal information signs that can be remotely. Programmed. And. Are essentially backlit. Can be turned on and off. And. We would put one in a zone in the town center, certain. Within a thousand feet of the center of the town and one close to the school. And there's specifications here for size, location, technology. We're gonna limit it quite a bit. When it's gonna be illuminated. Has to be text on a black background. I'm not, I don't remember why we decided it could be colored text. I've had some questions about that, whether it could only be white or it needed could be colored text.
It can be colors.
Yeah, I thought we agreed in colors.
Yeah, but do you?
Yeah, we did discuss that.
Because that's caused some concern from people I've been talking to.
I thought Carolyn's argument was that that, you know, some cases, a colored text. On a black background might be more legible.
And less bright than just black and white.
Okay.
And and because the schools. You know, I mean, the schools are going to wanna. Have something moderately colorful for the kids.
Yep, all right. Um, and then the static test and static images. So I don't know if you guys looked at the Boilston, they've just updated their bylaw for the same purpose. And what they said was the text, the content could only change at a certain interval. Which was fairly slowly, which. Got around what we were concerned about for all the motion that we didn't want. But allowed you, since it's such a small space, you can't put a lot of message on it, or if you want to have multiple messages. At some period of time, you'd be able to swap them. But that's not what we have in here.
Well, you can still swap them. Under this bylaw. There's nothing to prohibit that.
Doesn't say it has to be one message.
Yeah.
It's just that the images can't be, it can't be a movie, it can't be a. A dancing smiley face or, you know.
Yeah. Right. Well, you know, you'd have to interpret static, right, so.
I I think static. Has to mean you can have multiple messages, otherwise. We we really don't need the bylaw. What you put it up with one message and that's to stay there the whole time.
Right. And then we can just carve a wooden one and be done with it.
There was, um. There was a version of this which I. Shared with someone. And there was a place in here where it's, oh, here it is here, nine seven oh dot three. I don't remember us discussing this, but it says. Uh, you can't promote. Individual businesses, but then it says except for specific acknowledgement of public contributions or similar support and specifically, right? You guys read that nine seventy?
Yeah, I remember talking about this.
We did talk about, so what were we intending there?
Pardon?
What was it we were intending with that?
So we wanted, so you couldn't say, you know, promote. Some child's. Father's business. But we wanted to recognize if the Lions made a contribution to. The school or something that they could be recognized or some, you know, entity could be recognized.
Well, there was a concern that we would be. Doing kind of like we did with the 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 sound dial by the mall, you know. Giving them all, giving, um. Someone who can, a business or whatever that contributed. To the sign, uh, free advertising.
Right, but it's not, it wouldn't be, you know, shop at Joe's, it would be thank you to Clinton Savings Bank for your contribution to the baseball team.
Right.
Right, because it specifically says. Not an advertisement, but to promote individual businesses. Specific acknowledgement of public contribut- contributions or similar support.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. And it wouldn't be permanent. It would be.
No.
Because it's in the.
Correct.
Which it should be because it's a municipal use. So it's not like it, you know, down the the sign that was gonna be down by the Rotary is more of. It's not municipal.
Yeah.
Promoting, um, you know, it's well. Hmm, it's still not, it's it's a welcome sign. Um, and a sponsorship. So I think I can draw a distinction between the two.
Yeah. So. I've had quite a few discussions so far with people about it, and the issues I think that are most concerning are the location. Because we've got a pretty large, you know, two thousand foot. Space along the road through the center of town, where exactly would it go? That seems to be pretty important. To people, we actually have been. Working on that a little bit. Um. And the cost, I'd say, is the other. Primary issue. You know, there's also issues about. Ugly, you know. But I think we've. Tried to rule that out by limiting what kind of content there can be.
Hmm.
But. I am a little concerned that if we. If we aren't able to maybe narrow down the location a little more and have some answer for. Because I, we're not intending to get it paid for, right? Over, it's this is the first step in the process of. First getting it allowed, then figuring out. I thought what where it's gonna be and what it's gonna be and how much it's gonna cost, and then coming back to town meeting to get money for it.
Right.
And that wouldn't necessarily be the planning board.
Right. Oh, you're right, might not be. Yeah, I was hoping we could get a group of people together to work on it because there's a lot of issues.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, it wouldn't be the planning board. In my mind. It would be. Um, um, an invisible. Effort. From select board. Maybe somebody from, you know, different board members, different citizens, whatever.
Public safety.
Yeah, right, there are a lot of, um. There are a lot of people that have a stake in it, so. Hopefully we can get a group together, so. But I think there is a concern about location that. Probably does does need to be determined by us. And maybe what we've got here is not, um. Narrow enough to give people comfort.
So do you have some idea as to how that might be modified to? Make it?
Well, what I did today, I wandered around the center of town and Jack Mulli came with me and. And we looked at. What what the reasonable locations would be. Um, the current locations in a CR doesn't work. There turns out, I didn't even realize there was a sign there already that the Lions put up some time ago. I first fifteen years of driving by, I never noticed it. But that's actually, I thought it was a bad spot, then as I as I went back and looked at it a second time, it's not actually, it's not so bad, because when you're coming towards the center of town. For some reason, it is pretty visible. Um, across the street from that, there's a between the bank and National Lumber, there's a little pad that's got somebody's cardboard signed on it right now. You probably haven't noticed, it's between the two driveways. That would be okay. Um, it's far enough away from. Where Pleasant Street intersects Central, which is. A place where most people should be paying attention to driving, not looking at signs. And then. One of the better ones actually. Um. Is just beyond Linden Street as you're going out of town on West Street. That people could see coming into town before they get to the center of town. But it does require demolishing a couple buildings down there that aren't very attractive anyways.
That'll be harder sell than putting it down on the other end. With certain constituents in town.
Well, Kristen had this. Group come out and evaluate all the town buildings, if you guys read that report. Yeah, those those two buildings are gonna be more and more expensive to keep, and I don't think they're doing anything useful right now. So looking kind of ugly.
Sure, but there's better use of that land.
Could be. Those are the three. Places that look kind of reasonable. To me, the other one would be there's private property where the greenhouses are before you get to the center of town. Right? Greenhouse, the falling down greenhouse, yeah. Um, I mean, that's an okay location, but it's not owned. By the town and. I don't know. Other than those locations. Were something happening to cause some of those properties to change ownership. I didn't really see. A great location. So if we wanted to narrow it down from plus and minus a thousand feet from the center of town, one possibility would be to. Say these are three, you know, acceptable zones. Obviously, the one with the buildings on it. Is not gonna be, you know, maybe if this goes off for many years and nothing gets done, maybe those buildings will be gone.
Yeah, certainly counting on putting it where those buildings are right now doesn't make sense.
Right, right. The place where the lion sign is now is kind of interesting because it's already serving that same purpose. And it would just be a matter of upgrading it to something that someone doesn't have to go put little. Plastic letters in in order to change it. And has some lighting. You'd only see that. Reason, you really would, it would only need to be single sided because you'd only see it on the way into town. And. I never noticed it maybe because it never. I don't know. If if it had information I was. Looking for, and it was updated frequently, maybe I would have, maybe everyone would pay more attention to it. And now I know that there's a metal drive, right? Scrap metal drive, right, Tim?
Right.
Yep. So it does have good information, it's just.
So. I. I could support. This article. Um. With more comfort if we were to eliminate. Um, nine seventy two point one. And change nine seventy. And change nine seventy two point two to nine seventy two point one. So essentially, it would be one sign at the school with these stipulations. Let them build it. Um. Get people familiar with it. It's not clear to me, I mean, they have some money, they'd probably go ahead and do theirs. The, the problems of trying to deal with. Specifically where to locate it, is the land private or public? You know, and the money, it's unlikely that it's going to get built in the next year anyway. Um. Let people adjust to the fact that there's this, a sign, if they like it, that's great. And then we add text at a town meeting in the future that allows it's. At a, at a fairly specified location. That a bunch of people can agree to in the center. If that's what people want to do, I guess that, that, that would be. I'd be comfortable with a motion, an article that, you know, would. Would move forward with just the one sign. And I think it has a good chance of passing that way.
Yep.
Whereas it may be. It may just have a few too many wrinkles in it with this second sign location to cause people to say. Ah, I'm not so sure, you know, I could see it at the school, but I'm not sure I want it in the center of town yet.
Yeah.
I think that makes a lot of sense. One thing I don't like about that is I. I really like having the, uh, trailer sign because the information is helpful. But it just seems. You know, it's like an unfinished project and it's not even, shouldn't even be there on conservation land, and it shouldn't even be there because we don't allow it.
Right. Yep.
So. I think, what you say does make a lot of sense, Tim, but I. Just wondering if there was some way to narrow this down so much that if we can get over objections to it.
Well, if you do, if, if you do what Tim said and, and drop nine seventy two point one. And then reintroduce that in the fall town meeting, work on this over the summer. And refine it, at least you get the framework in, that it'll be an easier hurdle the next time.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
So not throw out everything, but just take it in baby or steps.
Cause I think it has a good chance of passing without that wrinkle.
Right, I mean, the school's asking for a new sign is the whole reason this is.
Correct.
Even happening, so, um, allowing the school. And. Seeing what it looks like. Because if it looks like any of the three that I drive past every single day.
So, so we'll be able to make a modification, that modification on talent floor, you think?
Eliminate that section, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So it's a public hearing, can, do we have people in the audience that want to participate in the?
Well, I just wanted to, uh, have us talk first and then we'll, we'll ask that question, and if we're all set with talking, I can open it up. We all set?
Yeah, I think that's, that was the two big issues, right? Location and money, and that, that kind of helps with both of those, yeah.
Do we have to vote on that?
Um, well, let's, let's hear discussion from, from, uh, people if they have any questions. Uh, and then we'll take a vote.
Okay.
Is there anybody, any audience members that have their hands up or anything?
Nobody's got their hand out.
Okay.
Oh, oh, Jack Mulahy.
Okay, can you ask Jack to?
Yep.
Hello?
Hi, Jack, how are you?
We're here, okay, this, you, you're gonna laugh at this, but this is really my first Zoom meeting.
You're a lucky man.
Wow, where have you been the last three years?
I must say you're doing a great job.
I had to go through all the sign up and everything, I was like, oh my god. Okay, yeah, so, um, yeah, I've talked with, with Jay quite a bit about the sign. Uh, personally, uh, you know, I, I love the historic nature of our center. And, um, I don't personally feel that, you know, that's a, a, a electronic sign is, is a. You know, that's a place for it, but. Given I said that, um, if there had to be a sign, um. One of the points which Jay brought up earlier was about, um. Business names on the, uh, on the sign, um. I don't, I personally don't think that, that any business name should be on there, uh, because that could be a can of worms. Uh, with people, you know, giving contributions, well, they have their name on there. How come I don't have my name on there, or, you know, and, uh. If there were no names on there at all, then that, that's the way you're, that's the rule. Um. And the, the, um, the other thing is, is which, which I think Tim, I think Tim's good, a good, you know. I think what he's saying is, is, uh, the way to go because. You can't expect people to, you know, vote on a sign. That they don't know exactly what it looks like and they don't know where it's going, you know, and, uh. So I think, uh, and I, and I think, you know, what you're allowing, or what you would allow for the school, maybe the content. Uh, might be, like you say, uh, Carolyn about the, you know, the, the colors and stuff. Um, you know, but that's a school sign. This is, you know, this is something that might end up in our, you know, historic center. Um, so. And I, I told Jay, I, I think black on white is, is, uh, uh, white on black, whatever it is. One of those is, is the way to go. Um, just because like the sign that's there has, you know, but white. That black letters on white or whatever.
It's actually black background with amber letters, so if I were, if I were to suggest a, a two color scheme. That's what I would suggest, um.
Okay, amber.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, something.
Cause the white isn't, the white is harsh, it's just very harsh.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I would go, I mean, I would agree with that, I, I just, you don't want to see lime green and, you know. You know, I mean, at the school, that might be fine, you know, that's why I think, and I would. The other thing I was gonna say is I think there are two different things here, you know, um. The school sign could be a little bit different maybe than the one that's in the center of our historic center, you know, in the. Um, and like we found out today, that there's not too many places where it can go, really. Uh, that's going to be an issue, I think. But, um, Jay had showed me a picture of a sign, I think it was over in North Borough with, you know, nice granite posts. You know, something tastefully done, so I think, uh, to have people vote on it, they kind of need to see what they're voting on. You know, like if someone comes to the, to get a permit for a sign, I think they have to show a, you know, they have to show what it's going to look like. Right?
Right.
Part of the process.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think, I think that would help.
And, and we, we require the same thing here.
Right, right, so, but we don't know what it's going to look like at, at this point.
Right, but, I mean, we could, we could, we could, um. You know, pass out something that along the lines of what Jay had. Uh, one new pictures of, but it would just be a suggestion, it's not going to be what would be ultimately, uh, constructed. Because we don't know what's going to be constructed, it'll be similar, it could be similar, it could be completely different. So we, we were kind of cautious on saying, this is what we're going to, you know, what you're voting on and then, and then not, that not be the case.
And there, there would be a process.
Mm-hmm.
For a particular sign, what we're establishing here are the outer parameters for that, we're not. Adjudicating a particular sign.
Right.
And, and who ends up making that decision about the aesthetic of the sign? Once the town votes for it, who, who ends up deciding?
Is it us or ZBIA?
One possibility is that when the, a group got together and finally decided that they wanted to. Put an article on the warrant to. Purchase a sign or have one made. They would have to be, you could argue, very specific about what it was going to look like, and they'd have to sh- show the town meeting voters. What it would look like, and that would be the formula, you know, I mean. That's probably the way it'll follow, because I think that you're right, people are gonna. Be a little leery about just saying, yeah, here's, you know, twenty thousand dollars to put up this sign, run the power to it and. Um, have a good time, figure out what it's going to look like on your own, I think people are going to want to say, show me. And that'll probably be the way it'll happen.
Yeah.
This is just to create the framework to allow that in the zoning.
Right, right. But I do think it's a good idea.
Would you be comfortable if we dropped that requirement for the, uh, for. Drop the location of the, um, the one in the downtown area?
Oh, yeah, I think Tim's idea is, I think Tim's idea is great, I think that's, that's the way to go.
Okay.
I think that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job, good job, Jack.
Thank you.
Is there any other, um, audience members that? Want to voice any concerns?
No hands up.
No hands up.
Okay, I, I'd make a motion to, um. Approve, uh, to recommend approval of this, uh, zoning bylaw with the excision of section nine seven two point one.
Second.
So nine seven two point one would become nine, nine seven two point two would become nine seven two, two, period, right?
Uh, or nine seven two point one, you know, whatever, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good.
Okay. So we have a, uh, motion and a second, is there any further discussion to accept this language? With that modi- modification? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask you to vote, uh, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tim Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
No.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Okay.
And I vote no, just because I don't think we need the signs anyway, I mean, I was willing to work on the project and all of that, but. I just don't think we need them.
Okay.
Okay, points over.
Wait a minute, did I just vote to support this? I just voted to support the change.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were doing.
No, I, I had said recommend the passage of the bylaw with that excision. I was, I was rolling it off, yeah.
I thought we were doing that right before town meeting. Can we have?
This, uh, don't we have, no, don't we have to report this at town meeting?
Yeah, we do, so usually what we've done is. Lots of times we hold the hearing, then we close the hearing, and then we take a vote as to whether we're going to support the articles or not.
Oh, yeah, I thought we were doing it at this hearing, so.
Yeah. So I thought it was a change to the language that you were just recommending, not necessarily the report to the town meeting.
Same.
Well, I, okay, I mean, I'm, um. Uh, are we then going to vote tonight to recommend or not?
Um, that, that's often what we've done, although it's not necessary, I mean, we, sometimes we end up saying. Uh, you know, we'll keep the hearing open and we'll solicit some more information in order to make a decision, but. You know, so we, we don't necessarily need to close the hearing even, but we could decide to do that and then we could decide to vote.
Okay, yes, and I thought that's what we, again, I thought that's what we were doing, well, I'm perfectly willing to have my, um. My motion then be simply the excision of nine seven two point one.
We've, we've taken a vote, so do we vacate that original vote and revote?
Yes.
Yeah, because we're confused.
That's fine, yep.
There's enough members that are confused that everybody's confident and comfortable that we vacate that original vote.
Yep, that's fine.
Do you want a motion on that?
Let's make a motion and vote on that to vacate our original vote, please.
I make a motion that we vacate the vote that we just took.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to vacate the vote we just voted on, is there any further discussion to this? Does everybody feel comfortable with this? Okay, seeing nothing, I'll ask you to vote to vacate the original vote, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous, so we can accept a vote now or motion now to change the language only. Of the location.
Yep, by removing nine seven two point one and making nine seven two point two, nine seven two point one.
Correct.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to change the location and reduce it. Any further discussion?
So we're voting to just change the language.
Change that language of the location of nine seventy two.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll ask you to vote, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous, thank you. Alrighty, so are we all set with this? Or do we want to vote to close this part, or do we want to move on with the other hearing and vote the entire? Uh, hearing, uh, whether we close this or not at the end.
But I think while we have this focused in, in mind, we should take a vote on whether to recommend this as, as amended.
What's, what's the date of the town meeting?
Sixth.
Yeah.
So we've only got one more.
We have one meeting after this.
Before that, yeah, okay.
And or we can have a, um, a special additional meeting if we need to.
Right.
I don't have any trouble voting on it right now.
To recommend?
Yeah. Figure out what our recommendation is going to be for town meeting, yeah.
So I would make a motion to recommend the, uh, bylaw. As amended by the just previous vote.
Second.
Okay, so this is a recommendation to, uh. Whether the board will recommend to report on this before town meeting, correct?
I thought it was to recommend passage in this town meeting, or, I mean, yeah.
Our report needs to indicate how the planning board. Feels about the support and non-support for the mo- for the article.
Voting to support or not support this particular article as amended by changing nine seventy two.
That's right, and a yes vote is a vote to support and a no vote is a vote not to support.
Correct, and we're all clear on this. Okay, so we have a motion, do I have a, and a second? I'll ask you to vote, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Well, I'm, I'm in a quandary, I, I might be inclined not to vote for this at town meeting. But I also feel that the town meeting ought to have an opportunity to vote on it, so I guess I'm gonna. I'm gonna say that, um, yeah, aye, yeah, interesting.
But, uh, I just, I guess I do have a question.
Okay.
Um, if there's a majority of the planning board that does not support this, it still gets voted on at town meeting, correct? Right, so my vote is no.
Thomas Andrew.
No.
Tom Sanford, aye. So we have a three to two vote. Okay. Uh, can we move on to the over fifty five?
Yeah.
Can you arrow? Can you arrow down a little bit more? On the screen check?
Oh, yes. Right there?
Yep. Okay, so this part of the uh this next article is to correct a deficiency in our uh senior residential development overlay agreement to allow for age restriction if uh because we ran afoul of the state.
Well, so eh, we can have an over fifty five that doesn't allow anybody that's under eighteen to live there for more than six months um in any nine month period. But if we did that, then the opportunity to count any affordable units in the project on the subsidized housing inventory wouldn't be allowed by the state.
Correct.
So we can leave the language in, but if we do, we lose the opportunity to have affordable units in these projects count on the subsidized housing inventory.
Okay.
And do we know what that number is? How many currently count towards our total number?
Well, at at the first over fifty five, um they gave us money in lieu of because we were just in the process of writing the inclusionary zone and bylaw. In the second project, I believe there's nine units. Eight or nine that are affordable. Um.
So the first being Brooklyn and the second being Highland Ridge?
Right. And our inclusionary zone and bylaw says that, eh, you know, a senior residential overlay district is one of the projects that should have affordable units, cuz we argued in inclusion meant inclusion in any new project over five units or whatever, so there wasn't an exemption for senior residential. Um, but the we became aware of the fact that we weren't gonna be able to include those on the subsidized housing inventory cuz the well, we could try. The state might catch up with us and say, but oh, by the way, you've got a restriction here that doesn't allow under eighteen um on a routine basis. If some someone still has to be over fifty five, it just means that someone can be under eighteen and live there and and the unit can be affordable.
Right, and this already passed at town meeting once.
Yes.
Um, but there was a glitch with that town meeting and the state, so we have to revote.
Yep.
Which had nothing to do with this, right?
No.
No, it was the whole town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd I'd make, I would make well, I so let's see if if um there's any, well, we can put a motion on the floor. I would put a motion on the floor to uh recommend to town meeting the um deletion of current section seven two three point two B and the renumbering as appropriate of the rest of seven twenty three point two.
Second.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Just if there's any public comment, we should probably
That's true, we should.
Just to see if there's anybody out there.
Hey.
No hands up.
No hands up.
Oh, oh, Eloise.
Okay.
When I went to a meeting, they they uh HUD was saying they ran into a problem where now you have a really old person and they need live-in help. Oftentimes, the one of the sweeteners is a single parent with a child.
Hmm. Interesting.
So that's all I have.
Awesome, so this is eh would actually be helpful in that situation.
Correct.
Excellent.
Okay, we um happy with? Anybody else you said? Anybody else have a hand?
No, that was my my mistake.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. And we've heard comments from the citizens and we have uh talked about this. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. So this is uh, we'll make a, this will be our recommendation to put forth as it's written here.
Yep.
Excellent. Now, for the uh fun portion of our entertainment tonight, the uh the rezoning of the land on River Road West. Um, we know it's gonna be pulled or passed over at town meeting, correct?
Well, there's gonna be a, there may be a motion to pass over. That doesn't mean it'll be passed.
That's true. Okay, so we should continue with this and the discussion.
Yeah, um. Well.
I mean, I think was, we have to assume that this article's on the warrant. It is. We have to assume that it might be voted on and as a result, not knowing that it's not gonna be voted on, we need to prepare a report.
Got it, okay.
I would say.
Do we need any further discussion, or are we okay with listening to anybody from the town uh from the floor, any citizens or?
Can you pull it, can you pull it up, Jay?
Um. It's right here, right?
So, yes.
The the only comment I would make is that the sentence to be rezoned down to residential agricultural zoning, which is what surrounds the property in Niva area as well. Actually, uh, there's there's one house lot to the west that's residential. The seventeen ninety farm parcel to the east is residential. All the abutting properties to the rear of it are limited business. The properties across the street are residential, so I mean, it's important to understand that it it isn't just a single parcel that's own limited business that we're taking out a limited business that's now gonna be in a
A dominant, yep.
But you know, there's no it's gonna be completely fifty fifty almost. Um because everything behind it's limited business and everything in front of it. And to the two short sides are residential, so.
Right.
Isn't there also some issue with the um identification information in this?
Yeah, so I talked to town council and she her recommendation, well, I didn't talk to her, but we shared emails back and forth back a while ago when we first posted the hearing. And their advice was post the hearing in such a way that you identify the fact that it's not map seventy, it's map seven. And then talk to the moderator, ask the moderator if he's prepared to accept the the motion with that modification. Um, now Tom and I talked about that and still wondered whether you know, if it's a citizen's petition, how how much opportunity you have to modify that. And I noticed in your minutes, you you talked about this last time, so I'm
Yeah, and there is also a note right here in the warrant.
Yeah.
Hmm.
I don't know, as as I indicated when I talked to you, Tim, when I stepped the the mall material, um uh, to me, I I know people are bending over backwards on uh on this, but to me, something that doesn't identify the lot in the motion as, to me, that's a fatal flaw, and I I just, I can't believe the AG is gonna accept that. I think it's a waste. It's a waste of time to uh to consider this.
However, I guess the moderator is prepared to to entertain it as a motion, so.
That even though it's got the street address?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's town council and the moderator have both sort of chimed in and said that they find this um satisfactory the the notes here that allow people to understand what's going on. The attorney general may say, you know, fatal flaw. But I think we need to just proceed as though it it could be on the warrant. It may not be moved to pass over and eh there may be a vote, um. So it, I don't, I mean, it's you know, I think we can, we can take a position.
Yep. Well, and speaking to the substance of it, um it's uh I agree completely with what Tim says is that um I think the uh the the motion misrepresents the orientation of this. It is connected to to limited business. That's one concern I have about it. The other concern I have is that um if we put this into residential agricultural uh somebody's gonna leap in and, you know, build half a dozen of uh McMansions on it and an important uh last remaining piece of property is uh is going to be taken out of play for virtually no public good whatsoever.
Mm hmm.
Um, I know that um people in the neighborhood are concerned about impacts, but I would point out that when those houses were built and when many people bought them, uh this was a an operating, uh you know, industrial gravel pits. You know, I mean, it's not it's not like uh anything has changed over that period of time. Um, so I, you know, I I I certainly strongly approach oppose this, both as to form and and to merits.
Um, I have a few. So the, first of all, does anybody know if the sale of this property actually happened yesterday?
I do not.
Okay. Um if assuming it did, do, would the changing of this to residential agricultural cha- uh disallow the proposed project on this property?
No.
No.
No, I'm still a five oh one C three allowed by uh
Okay, I just
by right in any of our zones.
Okay.
Yeah, the Dover amendment makes it pretty clear that uh you know, a five oh one C three is, you you towns can't put up a lot of roadblocks to the allowance of educational or religious uses, that sort of thing, so, yeah.
Sure, and I mean, this wouldn't be intentional anyway. They kind of all happened at different times, but I just wanted to make sure that um that the cur- the current proposed use would still be allowed if the zoning changed.
Yep.
Uh, there are two audience members with their hands up when you're ready?
I have one more, uh, I have a comment also.
Yep.
Mm hmm.
So I have a, I have a different opinion about the um history leading to this decision. So this was a gravel pit at one time. Arm on one side and I don't know nothing on the other, more business. And since then, the uh western side has become residential. Across the street has become residential. Eastern side was already residential. That's what's along the road and all come together and the business part is in the back. You know, to me, it just makes more sense for for it to also become residential, given that it sat for so long without anybody coming along to find, you know, to take it eh for a business purpose. I think it just makes a lot of sense to make that area all consistent. That's my comment.
Okay. Oh, any other board members wanna make a comment? Alrighty, can we take comments from the audience, please?
Sure, Michael's had his hand up the longest.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, it's Michael and Karen. Um, just to address a couple of points, we have been in touch with an attorney, Merrick O'Connell in Westboro about zoning issues and the um lot across the street in the mall. And the primary reason why we got ahold of an attorney is because this whole thing came up with this nonprofit uh about the same time we were still in discussion about Mark Rhodes. At that time, we were led to believe that there was a citizen's petition going forward on the warrant for the board meeting to change that to residential. Um, when we discussed with our attorney as as early as today, Brian Falk, um, he said that, you know, if something changes and for some reason that warrant doesn't get on, you you wanna reach the town uh select board and planning board to let them know that you want a citizen's petition on it and they can if they want to make an exception for your citizen's petition to come forward. I've sent that through today. Um, Kirsten Rubin, I think is her name, Kirsten Rubin, sent a note saying, hey, that warrant was set in February and the warrant was already set up for Mark and it's due to be passed over, so the neighborhood is on tonight because, of course, we have a different view of it, talking to an attorney that that warrant can go on, whether it's the Mark Rhodes one and it gets forward, or if the select board and the planning board want to make a special accommodation for us, because, of course, we we have no foresight in March for ourselves to put this on for this new entity. We we were always under the impression that the warrant was going on for a residential change um as previously described with Mark Rhodes. I think also um with Jay, we as a neighborhood concur. Everything around that piece of land that is shown and visible is residential. And just like the mall, if that doesn't get changed to zoning residential and that school fails or they can't make a go of it cuz she's doing zero-based budgeting, hoping that all these entities of restaurants and stores and stuff are gonna keep the the building alive and paid for. We've seen how this works at a mall. If that goes empty again, we've got it still industrial zoned, so it's appreciated if it got zoned residential just to protect the neighborhood from what could happen. Also, our attorney, Brian Falk, told us that, you know, the site planning is gonna be key for the neighborhood because the pump, planning board does have input into that site plan. Um, and so we are looking for support from the planning board to not vacate that warrant of Mark Rhodes or to reconsider having us put in our citizen's petition as a special accommodation. And we are really gonna be on top of the site planning because we have done so much in this town with the two percent taxes for conservation, for keeping it a small feel, for all the things that have gone up in the town to give the town a rural character. And if you looked at her architecture plan, her plaza is not a rural character. It's a very much a Boston city-centric fountain um retail plaza. And it does not fit the character, so those are the items we are working with and getting advice and counsel on. We would hope that we would have planning boards and other boards helping to protect our neighborhood. I do disagree with Tom Andrew. I don't think that McMansions are necessarily gonna go in there. I also disagree. I lived across the street from the sand pit. I was friendly with the owners of the sand pit. Trucks were not coming in and out twenty-four seven. They were limited to their time and there were very few of them, and they stopped operating within within less than ten years that I was here, so it was pretty dormant and they'd been trying to sell it along with no activity. Um, so it is not an apples-to-apples comparison with two hundred and fifty employees and two hundred students coming in every day. Very inaccurate. Um I believe there are other people in the neighborhood who will raise their hand and wanna speak to this as well, but we have been talking about it. We do need to get on top of this and and we would like to have this come through on the warrant, one of the two ways that I discussed. Thank you.
So a quick thought is that this article is a citizen's petition. It's on the warrant. It will be on the warrant that night. If the citizens that put it on the warrant make a motion If the citizens that put it on the warrant, make a motion to pass over. They can do that, but that doesn't necessarily mean it will pass. Now, I think to pass over, they probably just need a majority. At that point, if it doesn't pass, if. You as neighbors stand up and say, we believe that this article should go forward. And the motion to pass over doesn't pass, then the article comes up for consideration. And it would need two thirds to pass. So I don't see a scenario where it, it doesn't get recognized on the floor as an article that's going to be voted on. The moderator can't. Arbitrarily decide that. Because a couple people that put the article forward don't want it on there anymore. Um, you know, it's a citizen's petition. It has to go. To a vote, as far as I'm concerned. Either to pass over. And if that fails, then a vote to, to act on the article.
I agree with you, Tim. Um, and that is the way we'd like it to go. It would be helpful, as you know, for all your years living here in Berlin that. If a board recommends it not to be passed over, it gets a little more attention. Otherwise, people are tired. And they're happy to have things get passed over. Um, also, I think the way that Kristen, uh, responded to us in the neighborhood. Was very clear that it was not going to be. On the town warrant. I'm just trying to find her email now. Um, and so that was a little surprising to us as well. But, you know, as mentioned, we would appreciate the support for it not to get passed over, so.
So, you're, wait, so you're saying that Kristen told you that it wasn't going to be on the warrant?
That, um, let me, I'm trying to find the email.
I don't think so, because the warrant's already been published, right?
Right, it's, this is, the, the document we're looking at is published.
Okay, I, I think it was just the way she then, uh, said that it is. Has been, um. Hmm, I wish I could find this email, of course.
I'm sure she said something to the effect of that.
Yeah. She says, unfortunately, the warrant closed back in February and has already been printed and mailed out to our household. There's already a citizen petition for zoning. But the requestor has asked that we pass over this item at town meeting as it no longer is relevant. This is what we're saying. Just because the requestor has passed over it, doesn't mean that it has to be passed over. We'd like the board's support or, you know, our own support to make sure that it, we do get it discussed so we can present. This potential dilemma with, uh, light industrial versus residential.
So it's limited business, Karen. It's important to identify limited businesses opposed to light industrial.
Okay.
It's. It's a, it's a different zone entirely than the mall. The mall underlying zone is limited industrial. But this is limited, this is limited business. Um, but I, so if. I, so I think I agree. I can't imagine that Kristen. Is saying it won't have to be considered. There may be a motion to pass over. But that requires a vote. Someone just can't stand up and say, I pass over and the moderator says, sure, okay, we'll pass over. It's.
Okay.
It has to be voted on.
Okay. And, um, Brian, uh, you know, wanted to make sure that we understood when. A site plan is coming so that we have. Uh, not only spoken to this organization in advance because. She was very clear on her two calls. She'll do everything to help us, but then she got a little short with, you know, what, what is your point? And she didn't want to hear from us until April, after April eighth. So we, as a neighborhood, will put together, you know, what we'd like to do. Um, or work with her on to make sure that comes about with this. And, um, we also need to make sure that we have sight of anything going on with the site planning. Cause he said that will be very important for us, because with the Dover amendment, there are certain things with the site planning we can do.
Right, so the site plan approval process is ZBA. They'll have to hold a public hearing. The butters will be notified. And so you as in a butter would get a notice at least two weeks in advance of the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the way I'd understand it. I, we've got Eloise in the audience, so if anything, we're, we're suggesting Eloise is incorrect. Um, call us on it because we don't want to give out the wrong information.
She is not raising her hand, so.
That's a good sign.
Yep.
Yeah.
Run a roll. Uh-oh.
Too soon. Oh, wait, and then she put it down.
Oh. He was just playing with us.
Oh, there she is.
Yeah, she really is playing with us.
All right, Eloise.
Greetings. Karen Nielsen is the one who initially submitted the petition. And then I just heard from her. After, and she said the land had been sold and that they would pass over and I tried to explain to her. What is involved in a passover? Uh, I think her eyes were glassy from reading my. My document.
But we, we're, are we correct in our assumption that, that, um, if someone can make a motion to pass over, but it's still got to be voted on?
Correct.
And it has to be a majority vote.
Correct.
And so if it doesn't pass, then the article would be taken up for consideration. And discussion could ensue and it needs two thirds to pass.
But that's, that's a right of any of us to pass any article over.
Anytime.
I could stand up and say, I don't want, you know, article, whatever.
Yep.
And I, I, I make a motion to pass it over, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's part of the process, so, eh, eh, you know, we're, we're, the, uh, the planning board isn't. The gatekeeper of whether this article goes before the town or not.
I believe the warrants are in the mail.
Correct, so it's going to be on the warrant. Now, whether somebody stands up and says, we want to pass this over, there's a process for that. But it's not the planning board that's leading that. Uh, you know, whether it gets passed or passed over or brought to the floor for consideration.
Right, so back to something Karen requested a minute ago, um. Does the planning board weigh in on that motion to pass over?
Typically not.
No, so we don't, we don't have a, a recommendation.
We, we will give, we will give our report on the, you know, this hearing. But that's, that's to the extent of it.
Right, so I think what Karen's asking though is that we support. When we take our vote, whether to support this being on the warrant or not. She's asking for our support.
It's on the warrant.
No, it's, it's.
I, I, I miss, I, I misstated that. Not for it to be on the warrant, but when we give our report as to whether we support this motion.
Mm-hmm.
Karen is asking that we vote to support this. Okay, correct, Karen?
Yes. Thank you. You were far more concise than I was.
I'm a little less emotional about it than you are.
Yes.
We haven't done that yet, right? We haven't voted.
We have not taken a vote yet.
Whether we would want to rezone or not, huh?
We, we haven't even put a motion on the floor.
We should do that, right?
Wait.
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on. Are there other people that want to talk to about?
So Eloise, are you, I'm gonna lower your hand, but I'm gonna leave you available for right now.
Sure. One other piece, can you still hear me?
Yep.
Okay, the other piece that was discussed was the town owns a certain percentage of frontage along every, every parcel, every road. And, um, the question was posed, how much of that land that the town owns is part of the berm? There was a reference that he have a letter previously. About that and the berm, and so I don't know that we've looked at that and I don't know who it goes to, but evidently there is. Some leeway there with the berm.
Yeah, there is.
Maybe somebody else can, can speak to this, but my understanding is, is that it's measured from the center line of any street in town. And it depends on whether it's a major thoroughfare or a minor thoroughfare to how much of a distance that is.
I know that Julie Malloy is on and I know that she and her husband.
If she's, she might be on under a different name.
Oh, okay. She and her husband had the work done. They had staked out. What, at one point in time, they had stakes in front of their property with what was owned by the town and what was owned by them. Uh, so for our road, I believe that, you know, it has been done before.
Well, it's certainly a knowable number.
Yeah.
I think it's twenty five feet from the center. It's not very far. So it's ten feet off the edge of the road, probably.
You need some real data, I guess.
The, the road. The road. If it's a, let's say it's a two rod road. The pavement may not be centered.
Correct.
In the taking. In, in where the way is, as it's laid out. So, you, you can automatically say that we take the center of the pavement. And we go a certain distance in both directions.
That's true, that's true.
Roads don't necessarily follow. The, the center line of the, the, the taking essentially, so. Um, you need to be aware of that and I don't, I mean, I, Eloise has the road book. We could, you know, you, you could do some research on. Where, what, what, with that road is, um, as it was laid out. But a lot of these roads with two rod roads, which is what, thirty three feet or something like that, you know, so.
Yes, when I, yeah, yeah. From the, uh, center line.
From the ta- yeah, the, the, the pavement.
The taking was. Exactly, the taking was two rods on either side of the center line. Right, so it's about sixty feet. That's what I understood. And then you're right, it, you know, within that taking, the road could be right up against the taking on, you know, at one point. Right up against the, uh, the taking on the, on the other side, half a mile down.
You know, it's the, the, the way the road changes over the course of time based, you know, so it's. Anyway. That's, uh.
Yeah, but you're quite correct. I mean, the, you know, I think Karen, your, 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 your point is well taken that there is. Uh, there is a right of way that has been taken and it is wider than the road. And, uh, and then we, people would have to look at backs on the ground to, to see how much that affects the berm.
Yes, thank you. I don't know how to move that forward, but I, I'm putting it out there as it is something we have discussed.
I, I think one would have to look at the road. Book, which is a public record and is available.
Okay. Is that something we, we can do or is that something that the town transportation guys, people do or? Is that something the board even reports? If we go through this work, are you interested in supporting what the town has as land? Between River Road and this parcel? And protecting that land? Much likely, you know.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I, you know, it would be, it would be the selectman who would be defending the rights of the town. I mean, I know. I've had, uh. Interfaces with, you know, with the town about the maintenance of defense that's in front of my house, for instance, um. And it's the select, it's been the selectman and the, uh, highway. Or public works superintendent that I've dealt with on those issues and I suspect that would be the same here, Karen.
Okay. So the highway department and the selectmen?
That's who I dealt with on the defense issues that I had, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any additional? Citizens that have any comments?
See, no more hands.
Okay, any other board members have comments?
Karen, I'm gonna put you back. Oh, okay, I'm gonna put Karen back and. Um, Michael Rochette. If I pronounced that correctly.
Correctly, thank you.
There you go.
Uh, while this meeting was going on, I was sniffing around the internet and, and I concur that it looks like the sale of the property has. Is completed. At least from the MLS viewpoint. If I understand correctly, uh, the mechanics of, of the warrant. Uh, it sounds like the next stop for that is the town meeting. So, I'm another citizen that's in, in favor of it not being passed over, but I, I understand now that that will be an issue at the time. Okay. And finally, um, I had a tree taken down, uh. Uh, last year and, uh, and, and the town department came by and I was pleading my case that it might be the town's tree, but. But the, uh, engineer that was, was looking it over, went to the center line and paced off about thirty feet and. Said, sorry, it's not on the, within the town scope, so it sounds like. The measurements that you've given here are consistent with what I, I heard at that time. So that's all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we put a motion on the floor to, uh. Recommend. Um, do we want to do a recommend? For passage, do we want to do a recommendation as to pass over? Uh, do people feel about that?
I don't think we can assume it'll be passed over, so I think we need to act on it as though it's an article.
Correct.
I would agree with you. I would agree with you. I just wanted to, given the, the confusion we had the last time, I wanted to just be sure that we. Understood the, uh, the motion that we were considering.
Yes.
So, um, I would, I would make a motion to, um, recommend the passage of, uh. Article thirty.
With any necessary corrections to the property identification?
Yeah.
Is that something we need to worry about?
The note is there, so I think that that.
Yeah.
Covers it.
Yeah.
Uh, I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, uh, support article thirty. Uh, for the annual town meeting. Any other discussion?
I'd just say again, a yes vote would be to recommend that this be positively acted upon at town meeting. And a no vote is a vote against that recommendation.
Correct. Any other discussion? No, I'll ask you to vote. Timothy Wheeler.
No.
Carol McDonald.
I.
Thomas Andrew.
No.
Jay Teach.
Hi.
Tom Sanford, no.
Uh, Karen does have her hand back up.
Okay.
Allow her to talk and do we still need the screen sharing to happen?
Why don't we leave it up?
Okay. Michael back in the audience and Karen, you should be good.
If, one of the components to the land. Right of way that was highlighted in our discussion was that. Um. The right of way could preclude. The, um, school from taking a big chunk out in the middle to make a driveway. Or make any other open space. And so as we have previously discussed, even with the, um, Mark Rhodes as the developer, everyone. A majority, I shouldn't say everyone, was in favor of retaining the berms. So this was one way, um, that could be used to help retain the berm. Um, at least for safety reasons, residential reasons, character of the town reasons. Um, if you have that right of way, you can make that case that that cannot be taken down, that part of that land. Um, if you have that right of way, you can make that case that that cannot be taken down, that part of that land be used as a right of way.
And, and, and Karen, I would also point out that during the site plan approval, even if. Uh, there wasn't some preclusion of modifying the burn because of the right of way. Uh, what happens with the berm and the maintenance of it and any changes to it would certainly be part of the, um. Uh, part of the site plan approval and, you know, speaking just for myself, I would be supportive in maintaining. You know, the, uh, the, the, uh, the barrier for benefit of the neighborhood to the extent practically possible.
Okay, appreciate that.
Yeah, I have the same view. I mean, the berm to me is pretty important.
Yeah, and I. I know from my experience on boards. That when residents show up and have an opinion, it matters to the people sitting on the board.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
All right.
Um, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing, the public hearing.
Don't move.
Second.
Any other discussion? This is to close, vote to close the hearing. Uh, Jay Teach.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Carol McDonald.
Hi.
Thomas Andrew.
Hi.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Hearing is closed. Okay, thank you. Um, we have the next item on the agenda is Peter. Right, J?
Yes.
Okay. Is Peter?
A little, a little over time at the moment.
I know, way over time, but. Hi, Peter.
Evening, everyone. Um, I'm fine, thanks. How about you guys?
Good, thank you. Sorry we're away all the time, but.
That's, that's quite right. So, uh. Corinne Gosserson should be in the audience. Would you bring her on? She's gonna do the, uh. She'll, uh, present what we've got to say.
Okay.
She too is an EDC member.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Corinne, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, yeah, to summarize what brought us to this meeting is, um. I've recently reported to the Economic Development Committee, the Energy Committee and the Select Board. Uh, what I was able to find out about potentially installing a publicly available DC level three charging station. So, um, we wanted to gauge interest in the idea. And we found there was enough interest to go ahead with the idea. Um. At that time, grants that had been available through the mass EV incentive program were closed to new applicants. So, um, I've since learned that N Grid has, um, grants available. Um, so N Grid is, uh, it has programs that will award up to forty thousand, um, per DC charging station. Plus thirty thousand towards customer side of our costs and they cover a hundred percent of their side of the costs. Um, the program requires two stations. Um, so the maximum incentive would be a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, this includes five years service and warranty. Shipped on site, commissioned, and, um, these units would be owned by us, not leased. Um. They did a site visit. Their contractors, um, confirmed that. The location across from the eighteen seventy Town Hall on Woodward Ave, uh, would be sufficient. For the purpose, um, what would not be cost would be shipping costs. Um, signage, bollards, which, uh, the town could either put in or we could. Um, um, the company would, would do that. Um, so. Out, out of, uh, out of our pocket costs would be between five and ten thousand dollars. And, um, basically, yeah, so we're here to just determine whether there is interest in going ahead with. Um, getting a, um, a written quote, so we can find out exactly what our costs would be. Uh, if there's enough interest to do this.
And, and if there is interest on the plan, planning board's side, we'll bring this to the select board and get their temperature as well.
Yeah, I love it.
Yeah, I think it, yeah, it's a great idea.
We should go for more than two.
So the, the one point, though, is there's, um. There's a whole mess of activity going on in the center right now, which this is appropriately timed for. The, the complete streets. Project has got the five hundred thousand dollars and they hired an engineer. Who will begin to do some public outreach and try to ascertain people's feelings about. Perhaps making Wooded Avenue one way. I think right now the proposal is to have the sidewalk on the, sort of the northwest side of Wooded Avenue, but. There has also been some discussion about the possibility of putting the sidewalk. On the common so that there are actually three legs. To the sidewalk on the common instead of having to leave it in order to, you know, continue on Wooded Avenue. Um. But i- if that were the case, then, um, depending on where that sidewalk's located, I would assume that. Integrating the charging station, you know, as part of all those modifications, if it's possible. Or with those in mind anyway, makes a lot of sense. Um, but yeah, this is great.
I just wondered why, why wouldn't we do it at, for instance, the town offices or somewhere like that where there's, you know, there's more room to play? I, I think the idea is great. Um.
I think that the reason, I, I know that the Energy Committee did look into that and it's kind of tucked away, so it's not publicly accessible, which was. Is part of where you get these grants is it has to be, uh, available to the public. Um, and the idea is that also that it brings, I mean, so that somebody might wanna stop, charge the car and go and. Buy something at a local store or, you know.
There's so many local stores downtown.
Yeah.
Well, they may wanna go to.
So, so, so just to clarify for me, where, where exactly would this? Be located on Woodard Avenue?
So there's, uh, right across the street from eighteen seventy Town Hall on the church side. There's a, uh, a utility pole and it has a, um, um. Transformer box, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
The electric company, which N Grid, uh, did evaluate or the contractors for the company that, that, so this is a program, um, management company. That will do all of the work. They will, uh, submit the application. They will get the grants. We don't pay them anything. They get paid through the grants. Um, and they take care of everything and, um, they did the site visit, visit that, um, evaluated that, um, pole.
Okay, okay. I just would point out that, that's, that's, uh, F P C, well. It might be, might be within the, um, the right of ways we were just talking about earlier, but, uh. It, it also might well be FPC property.
Um, well, it was put at the, um, it was put in for the eighteen seventy Town Hall. Yeah.
I, I, I understand, uh, but I believe that that, the, the piece of property where that is in the septic system. For eighteen seventy Town Hall is there as well. But I believe that that, and again, we, it's just, it's just, uh. It's just an item to further check. I believe that the actual property is owned by First Parish Church.
So are you talking these first two parking spaces?
Yep.
Right.
And the, a second site was, was evaluated. Um, there's a, a similar, uh, utility pole between. The Berlin General Store and the National Lumber Store, uh, which was also. Deemed to be appropriate. Uh, it would, it could withstand the, uh, the energy needs. Um, but that, that's, that site would maybe not be as, as good for snow plowing. Um, it takes up parking spaces. So it's not.
And both National Lumber and the General Store are not very big on the idea of losing parking spaces, which is understandable. Um, Corinne, remind me or remind us all who pays for the electricity?
Remind you what, sorry?
Who pays for the electricity?
So the, uh, the users, the, um, EV car owners. They have an app on their phone. They find a charger. They wanna go and charge up. Um, so anybody passing through maybe, um, Berlin on sixty two might stop and charge up. So we would char, the, the unit would charge a surcharge. So it's, it's more expensive than they would find it charging from home. Um, and we get the, uh, surplus. It's not enough to self sustain. Um, but with these grants, we don't need to self sustain, so.
Awesome.
So in the, in the long, the town owns this and is in the business of selling electricity, right?
Right. Yep.
Is that the only option or is there some way to have somebody else own it and pay the town?
We could lease the unit. Um. Which I think we discussed it, the EDC discussed it, um. And the, uh, Energy Committee discussed it and that's probably not a long term good solution.
The town's responsible for maintaining it and.
So the, uh, so this company, well. There's various options, but the way, the one that I looked through with this company Voltrak, the project management company. Um, they, they are aligned with ChargePoint. So there's a lot of different companies out there who do it. So ChargePoint is the one that I looked into. Um, and N Grid supports that. They have the right technology and equipment. Um, and, um. Yeah, so.
Just wondering, what is, what does the town have to do?
Uh, nothing. Charge, ChargePoint does it all and Voltrak does it all, so, um.
Right, so if the machines break, the, this company comes out and fixes them. Uh, how, how do, how do they get alerted?
Uh, it's all computerized and, and they have wifi, so they know they're, they're tracking usage and all of that. Um, yeah, so this, um, comes with five years service and warranty. After the five years, I guess we renegotiate the contract. Um, I'll know more details once I get the actual written quote. Um, which is pending. They had some.
Liability standpoint, does it, you know, if it, somebody parks their car and plugs it in and explodes, um. And burns down the center of town, is that? Where's the insurance? Where's, you know, where's the liability, um?
Yeah.
They, they blame the horse farm. And the top of the hill.
Probably the car. I don't know.
The company that's kind of managing it is also gonna carry insurance, so if they damage our road or something.
I expect so, yeah. ChargePoint is everywhere. Um, so I'm sure they have a system that. Makes it sustain, sustainable.
Yeah.
Tim, would Complete Streets be a source of funding?
Uh, no.
Small percentage?
No, I wouldn't think so. It's, it's, um. The, the specs aren't written out that way.
So if, if we were to pursue this, we, the town were to pursue this, we'd have to put this on a town meeting for, uh, appropriation. Is that right?
If you wanna get money from the town for it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it sounds like the, uh, planning board's got some interest. Should we take this to the select board and get their temperature as well?
Yeah, that sounds fine, yeah.
I think that's, uh, wise.
Okay. Corinne, anything else regarding this?
Nope, that's it for me.
Nice project.
Touch on, do you wanna touch on the race?
Um, I don't have all the information on that, no.
Okay. Okay, then that's, uh, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Right, have a good one.
Yep, bye now.
You too.
Thanks, good night, good night.
Right, is there, um, anything else on the agenda?
Yeah, I think, uh. I think it was the mall stuff, however, I looked at, uh, I've only been able to look at the development agreement and there's nothing relevant, um. There, I have to get down and get the, uh, intermunicipal agreement. Uh, and report back. I also unfortunately have a, um. A call with our, uh, Hong Kong office at nine forty-five. I had, uh, I thought that would be fishy.
It doesn't matter, doesn't matter what time you schedule it.
Yeah, really, yeah, it, 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 it'll do that, yeah, um. So, um, I mean, I guess the report is I looked at the development agreement. There really is nothing that, uh. Is relevant there at all. Um, I'll try to get down and get a copy of, uh. The intermunicipal agreement, but I'm beginning to think. That this is going, you know, that there isn't an established rule. And we're gonna have to, you know, sort of work it out with Marlborough as it goes along. But I will confirm that in the intermunicipal agreement.
So. What we're saying is. That Marlborough's proceeding with the rezoning of the entire strip. For a, a consistent set of uses. That it would include the overlay, what we call the overlay for the mall.
Yes.
Would, would go forward independent of anything that we would do. And that in our case. Um, a modification to the overlay district language. For allowance of certain types of uses, for instance, some type of residential activity. Would be an independent exercise on our part. But.
Uh, that's, that's not, no, that, that actually wasn't the, I haven't gone that far.
Well.
Uh, cha- changing the overlay may require, it is more likely that that would require working with. Um. With Marlborough, changing the underlying zoning, I'm more and more convinced that that's independent for each town. But that's the underlying zoning, not the overlay. That, that's the piece I have to further look at.
So, so the council for. The mall. Um. Has argued that there's. There, there may be a development agreement that was signed by the town of Berlin. But that there's no similar agreement that they can find that was ever recorded from Marlborough.
Right.
And so he questions whether. I guess he, my sense is that he questions. Whether the two towns need to act in accordance with one another or whether we can act independently.
Yeah.
Now, in regard to the intermunicipal agreement, that's, that's a different beast because. That spells out all the inner relationships between police and fire and.
Right, I don't think it has anything with respect to zoning, but I need to check that, yes.
Right, but i- in, and I spoke to the fire chief the other day and I said. Because he, he listened in to the Urban Affairs Committee in Marlborough when they began to discuss this as a committee. To take it to the, um. To the higher ups over there, the town, the city council. He's, you know, I said, it, it seems like we need to work hand in hand with him right now. Because we need to understand the limits that the fire department would wanna see imposed on any development. Particularly in terms of height and stuff like that, which I think Marlborough's going pretty high in terms of height perhaps, so. Um, so.
But again, they could not affect any land in Berlin, whether in the overlay or the underlying zone, the piece. That I still have to try to run. That I still have to try to run down is to whether changes to the overlay require agreement to the town. I'm, I'm really quite confident that changes to the underlying zoning doesn't. You with me?
Yeah. And I, and I always thought that anything to do with the overlay would require both towns to be in correspondence and agreement, but. Uh, that, that wasn't the feeling that they began to pitch back from Marlborough and, or from the developer's point of view, and I thought, hmm. That's where I think, yeah, we need to do the little extra homework, so.
Yep, but, and, and again, I have looked at the development agreement that we have. Which, of course, Marlborough was not a signatory to, but there's no indication there. On, uh, you know, cooperation of the towns. With further changes.
No, but I always assumed that any use that we wouldn't have allowed in Berlin wouldn't be allowed in Marlborough and there, in the overlay, um, but maybe that was.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, cause remember we had to amend it to allow the theaters to go in.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure we worked with Marlborough on that. The more I thought about this, Tim, I mean, I've thought about it more since I. Stopped by to pick up the papers and, you know, and look through the development agreement.
Right.
So, and I, do you remember that we, I don't remember that we worked with Marlborough on the theaters.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Um. So anyway, um. More and more, I'm looking at it, you know, we're, each of us is rowing our own boat, and if there's cooperation, it's gotta be cooperation de novo, you know, that we. Establish now and not rely on some. Past agreement. I think that's where it's coming down.
Yeah, and I think what, what concerns me is that the city council is moving full speed ahead with. This. You know, this, this sheet here, which is the eight pages or five pages of.
Yep.
Use chart, which, um, I, that's where I think it's important for us. They're not gonna act immediately, it's gonna come out of that committee and go to the council and they'll push it around for a while, but I. They, I think they'd like to act on it before the summer's out and I, so if we have some objection. To some of these uses. On the, in the overlay, I think we need to announce that to Marlborough.
Yeah, I think it's vote early, vote often on that, yeah, um. And. Well, what I would, what I would suggest is, because I think what we're down to is forming a position on those uses. Is for everybody to review those uses and let's put it on the agenda for a good solid forty-five minutes or so at the next meeting.
Yeah. I agree.
And unfortunately.
Time.
I'm leaving myself one minute for a bathroom break because this is gonna be an hour call. All right. Thanks. All right.
Did I be putting that in the minutes?
All right. I was gonna say.
You do, what, the only other question I have was. You, you've got, it's, it's non-debatable once it's. Do you? Did, was there another A and R?
Um.
I don't even know if they came.
A couple days ago after I'd already.
Posted the, I mean, it wasn't on the, it wasn't on the agenda, so.
Yeah.
No, no one.
I was gonna discuss to you guys about whether we could squeeze it in, but it seemed unlikely.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not on the agenda and a, a neighbor would have. Considered the possibility of showing up, it's probably better to wait and have it on the agenda.
The neighbor actually is here, just the proponent isn't. The neighbor's Peter.
Peter's gone.
No, he's here.
Oh, he's down there.
Yeah.
It's just a blank screen, though. Anyway, it'll be on the next time we meet, right? Good. I second the motion.